Welcome you all to East of the East Committee of the Holy Land, Monday, November 8, 2021. I got six to climb. Catherine, you take the role?
Trustee Molly, here's trustee Andreessen.
Here.
Trustee Cunzi, trustee Britten, here's trustee Samiana, here's trustee Chiver.
Here.
And president Mill. I mean, Molly, I'm sorry.
Here.
Okay. Oops. Okay, please go on, we can.
Oh.
I don't know, babe.
Oh, you would say.
President Mike.
I think it's a public comment on agenda I've been filling in. Any way you'd like to address the board on the agenda item? No, saying no? Okay, this is ready to be muted. She is our agenda item. So we have a, please pension fund actuary or presentation discussion by Lataback and Eamon?
So, no, I'm not with Lataback and Eamon, I don't know most of you, but we do have rates.
Rates.
Rates with Lataback and Eamon, who's an actuary of the firm, so he's going to have a presentation. I did have a few handouts that I handed out before about six, seven. The reason why we're here is that the last few years, and under some circumstances, it's understandable that contributions have not done what the pension funds expected, or what our actuaries have presented. So, on the handout that I presented, I handed out today, on page, the handout in page number one, is kind of what the accounts for municipalities with pension funds, they're changing that position, which basically is a revenue and expense report. And what I wanted to point out is that the pension fund is on target to exceed pension benefits by almost $200,000 this year versus the contributions coming in. Those contributions include the village contributions as well as the other contributions. So what you're looking at is five months, 512 months of the year. The, uh, the village contribution, I believe, is just about half of where it will be, so that's about six months worth. So, but we are looking at about $200,000 of having to use investment income to pay pension benefits this year. On second page, um, and the third page, those are, this is comparison from 2016, your fiscal year 2016, to 2020. Um, that's the most recent information that I have. Budget pension liability seems to be increasing about $200 million per year. So it's gone from the 2016, the end of 2016, it was $7.5 million, kind of under that. And if you flip the page over to 2020, you're looking at a little over $13 million net pension liability. So it's increasing every single year. The last year, or inside the last page, in page number four, it has taken out of your financial statements, or pension financial statements, and it's showing contributions every year. It's showing the actuary determined dollar amount, and then the contributions that the village has done, putting into the fund, and then the deficiency or the excess amount. The excess is a couple of years, it's in practice, every other year has been a deficiency. Now, to point out too, and I know that that will be going into probably a little bit more, aside from my handwritten notes, because this is more current information than I was able to get off of your website. But, um, the contributions, um, that is, that's listed on this page, is, are the contributions determined by the pension fund's actuary, not the state's minimum contributions. So the, the state does provide some minimum pension funding, and I lose track of what they've changed or whatever over the years. But, um, that will be, unless you have any questions for me, I'd like to have that come up and you go through the presentation that I believe was in your packets.
That actuarial amount you mentioned is more aggressive than the state minimum, correct?
I'm sorry?
That actuarial amount that you mentioned is more aggressive than the state minimum, correct?
Yes, it would be, it would be, the difference being, our recommended contribution would target 100% funding versus a 90% funding by the statutory minimum. In addition to the amortization period in which you're contributing towards your unfunded liability, the state would go to year 19, or 2040, which is about 19 years, 20 years from now. Right now, we're at a 15-year period, so we're a little bit more accelerated on the amortization period as well. So two primary reasons, there's some other technical differences that exist, but those are probably the two biggest ones that we would see between our, the difference between our two, two presentations.
And I think that was also going to touch on what happens when you do just look at the 90% funding level that the state's minimum number for checks.
Correct, right.
Any other questions? I do want to thank you for having us tonight. Pension Board has been talking about wanting to do this for some time now, and we feel like sometimes we're kind of out there. You know, they, they manage their funds and they do a wonderful job managing those funds and the benefit payments. And, um, but we'd like to maybe engage more with the village in those contributions. And right now, you're somewhere around a 50% funding, funded level. Which, you know, to me, that 50% funding level, when you're dipping in, so you're using your investment income every year to be making some of those payments, usually you want to get there so that you're using those investments or investments permits to do that, but you're not very many, which is sorry. So, thank you.
Thank you.
If you have additional handouts of that presentation, if you don't have it available, we can work it out. So, if you guys like a copy, you have a copy. You have it. Thank you. Yes, my name is Bob, so I'll call.
I'll take care of it. Thank you, Bobby.
Everybody have a holdup? All right. So the first question to the president, the presentation would talk about the recommended contribution of funding says, as I just mentioned before, when we talk about recommended contribution, we're targeting that 100% funding over the next 15-year amortization period of the amortization or unfunded liability. When we're talking about contribution, it consists of two components. One's the normal cost. The normal cost is accrual benefits for additional year service by longer actives. So everybody who's still in the plan, still contributing, employee contributions, they're earning additional year service. There's also a corresponding, uh, player contribution goes along with that. That equates to, so if you look at this top line, recommended contribution of 1.12 million, middle of the top row there. About 210,000 is normal cost, the remaining about 910,000 is payment of the unfunded liability. So if you look down, about midway down, uh, there's a line called E again, unfunded actuarial liability, of 10.42 million. That's what we're amortizing right now to come up with that contribution on that. Going up a few rows, look at your market value assets. Assets were great this year. Assets performed very, very well. About 22% return this year compared to your 6.5% expectations. So, great numbers there. However, when we do our actuarial calculations, we also use what's called the actuarial value of assets. And what that means is, instead of taking a big asset gain and using it today for a big asset loss and using it today, we smooth out that ride. We take only 20% of each gain or loss each year to calculate the actuarial value of assets to limit those peaks and downs, keeping them in a little more moderate range. So if you look at your actuarial value of assets, last year, your actuarial value of assets was higher than your market value. That usually helps the plan, helps everything, because you're deferring losses, what that means. With this really big gain you had this year in doing investments, that flipped. So now, our actuarial value of assets is about a million dollars less than your market value. So now you're deferring gains. Is that good or bad? There remains to be seen. What that does is, it keeps those gains in the plan to offset the potential for future losses. Or you could potentially try to accelerate, use all those gains today, and it would minimize the contribution, because your unfunded liability would go up by that same million dollars. So, people in the pension boards have the option, how they want to do these when such drastic things change. We actually always offer our recommendations, but really, at the end of the day, the contributions are going to be relatively the same going forward. You might have a little change in the short term, but long term, you know, as I mentioned before, you're still a 50% funded plan, and contributions are going to be required going forward. Looking at your accrual liability, 20.85 million, increased by about 1.6 million over the prior year. That's, the increase in liability again is due to that normal cost, so you accrue additional benefits, interest on your existing liability, and then taking out the benefits that were paid throughout the years, how we get to really a roll forward amount, or how we can estimate what that number would be. Then there's going to be other demographic gains and losses that happen with census changes, those sorts of things that I'll be able to, if you want to consider. Any questions on that so far?
The interest.
Right me?
The interest you just mentioned.
Mm-hmm.
What is that interest based on?
It would be your funding rate, so 6.5%, so right now, you're $21 million of liability. We're assuming 6.5% on that $21 million, it's going to increase by 1.3 million dollars next year, just due to interest alone. Depends, that's a simple calculation, but approximately how that works. Okay. Going to the next page, talk a little about demographic changes. So this is some of the, the gain or loss items we would see outside of what we would expect. Really, you would hit one demographic change here, one number retired this year. And, uh, what that, what that did is, increase your contribution by 35,000. So this member is likely younger than what we would have expected, they might have been in their early 50s. Although, you know, 50, 20, I might have just walked out the door, I don't know exactly who the number is. But usually, when you retire earlier than what you would have expected, your plan liability would go up. It's now you're paying that benefit for more years than what would have been expected, okay? But what happens is, correspondingly, the normal cost, which would be a contribution amount, goes away, because you don't, they're not accruing additional benefits, so you have an offsetting decrease in the net amount. So, you have two, two items at play here, one increased substantially, one brought it down a little bit. But as a net, $35,000 increase in contribution, just for that one number retired. Uh, inactive members, so you have all, you're all retirees, 13 retirees out there. We have, you know, the only way that they ever stop getting benefits is if they pass away. You didn't have any negative experience like that. So usually, as people live longer than what we would normally expect, even fractionally, you know, it's very small probabilities, it still increases your liability here, you know, $5,000 additional contribution to that. Other demographic experiences with regards to, you're bringing actives and so forth, is, is not as significant. Moving to the next page, talk about a funding policy change. This is that amortization piece of the unfunded liability we're talking about. We started this off many years ago, probably at 20 years, and we've been down, down a year every year. That's typical progression. However, once we get to 15 years, we don't, we don't want to get too aggressive. We go to 14, 13, 12, because in those, that, one, the contribution goes up really high. And then, two, the impact of a really adverse event would be compounded by being amortized by a smaller, uh, by a smaller number. So, what we do is, at 15 years typically, we leave what we call a layered policy. Your existing liability will continue to go down next 15, 14. But next year, when we have a new gain or loss, we'll start that at a new 15 years. So now we're going to have two different levels, and then two years, now a new 15 year, a 14 year, your existing liability is going to be going down. So, we try to slow down the impact of that amortization period, uh, so it doesn't get to double one or two years, have a huge loss in your contribution by, you know, really large numbers. So, that's, that's really a risk mitigation standpoint that we.
Forgive me for not being a numbers guy, I say frank, excuse me. But, uh, when you say like, when you get down to the low 15 years, like if there's a big bad event, you know, it, it has more impact if it's like 10 years left, 12 years left.
Correct.
But as a practical matter, it's a big event, and you've got 12 years left.
Right.
I mean, so it, it is a big event, I mean, so it's, it just sounds like there's a kind of a, whether it's iconic or actuarial or what you're saying, like, it's not that bad, what it actually might be.
It, it might be, but we, we also look at the plans being, the, the plan is not going to end in 15 years. We know the plan is still going to continue for years beyond that. So, um, you know, we, you know, that's where we try to take into account. We're not trying to fully fund everybody, so you're 100% in 15 years, if something new happens, you know, to keep that, uh, fully funded, because we know turnover is going to happen, you're going to have new officers coming in, you're going to have new retirements, you're going to have a lot of activity that happens. So just trying to tie it to one closed group of, of people, you know, is numerically probably not the most appropriate way.
No, in terms of, I, I always think more about a drop dead date, what if actually it'd be a plan that's going to continue?
Right, and there's a good, there's always, trying to have a good target. Where you want to be, you know, that's up to the pension board yourselves to decide, what's our, how, what path do we want to be on to try to get to that number? We do have a statutory minimum component out there by the state saying you have to be 90% by 2040. So, to the extent that you're more aggressive than that, great, more money in the plan is always better for the participants. But, you know, if you start falling below that, that's when, you know, the plan can have some actions they can try to, you know, I'm not suggesting any of that to happen, but to try to encourage additional contributions.
Thank you.
So, this funding policy change right now has no impact to the plan. We first notice that in the next year, when, um, the, the amortization for the new one funded would stay at 15 years versus that at 14, okay? Next page, we talk about the recommended contribution, we said before, it went up by $127,000. This is really the reconciliation of how that happened, okay? The top item being expected changes, since you're amortizing on a level percent of pay basis, we would expect your contribution to go up by about 3.75%, that's your salary wage, or 3.25%, excuse me. That's your salary wage increase assumption. That's, it's an increasing payment pattern on your unfunded liability, a little bit different than a car loan, house loan, or a flat 30-year statement on forever, an increasing level of percent pay. With payroll expected increase, your contributions expected increase in line with those compensation changes. So we would expect your liability to go up by 660,000, contribution by 32,000. Uh, salary increases were a little bit less than expected, so outside of your, your, uh, your step program within the contract, you have a long-term expected, uh, increase at 3.75%. Salaries were a little bit less than that on average to bring your liability down. However, the contribution did go up by, uh, a thousand dollars. Just who, who was that member? There might have been a promotion, so their individual salary might have gone up, but the general whole, everything came out, and usually balance out that way. Actuarial experience, $954,000 increase in your liability, about the increase to your contribution. This is really going to be two different pieces. One, in your demographics, demographics, as I mentioned before, is primarily that retiree, the new retiree. Uh, there's about $556,000 liability, about $40,000 contribution. And then the remaining piece, uh, we as actuaries, we use actuarial software to validate these liabilities. We even went on a new system this year, and the way that we calculate things, the way the numbers get crunched and all that kind of stuff, it had a small increase to the contribution and software as well, to, to balance that, uh, about $400,000 liability, about $44,000 contribution. Last item was asset returns, where you're going to expect to decrease your contribution, as we know, very good asset return here, so we're dropping that down, but we get to take some of those proceeds of this, of this, uh, place. And the last piece is contributions less than expected. So we're, we're calculating our numbers on that target of the 1.1 million, our last year being about $960,000, um, recommended contribution compared to the, the contribution putting in on a statutory minimum basis. There's a shortfall there of approximately $325,000. So, as our reconciliation goes, that would increase funding in the future to, to make up that shortfall. Any questions on that?
Catherine.
Yeah.
I've spoken to several members of legislature, and they've all indicated that there's discussion and an appetite right now to extend that 2040 number to 2050. I just wonder, have you been hearing anything?
I've heard, that's, that's been kicked around for years. Uh, it's 2050, 2055, I don't know if it's, um, kind of, well, I don't know if they're leading the charge, but they're a component of that. Um, in my opinion, you're just kicking the can down the road.
Yeah.
You know, but it is, you know, it is, and also, not only is targeting the 2050 or 2055, they're also saying reducing the 90% to 80%. That's a, that's another consideration that's being kicked around out there. So whatever actually happens, I don't know. As history goes, we're about at the point where a change is made. If you go back to when they extended it to 2040 from 2033, they moved it back a few years. That was about seven, eight, 10 years ago, so as history goes, they, they do take a look at that. I think they want to get through all of the consolidation first, or maybe when the consolidated boards convene and they really start taking over and, and calculating the contributions themselves, they would implement something like that. And so, maybe a year from now, they would show that. I haven't heard anything definitive that that's going to take place, but it is that possible.
So, speaking of consolidation, um, there's also been talk about a statewide consolidation, you know, there's penalties for this purpose, and basically, the state paying over control of it, is that still being kicked around?
No, that's been, that's, that's happening, that's happening, yes. So, the, the police fund is going into one individual fund, the fire fund is going into one individual fund. The fire fund is a little bit ahead of police right now, they've already been transferring assets in. So, they're taking over pretty much the control of the assets for investment purposes. The pension boards, everything else is going to operate pretty much as they have, other than having control of investments. You're still going to have quarterly meetings, you're still going to accept new members, you're still going to have disability hearings, you're still going to be paying benefits. You're going to have to request assets from the consolidated board to put into a local, uh, checking account, if you will, to, to be able to pay your benefits. You're going to have to probably have four or five months of benefit payments in surplus, because it's going to take them at least a month to transfer money back and forth to the consolidated fund and pension board. I, I understand police is going to probably start taking assets around January 1. And by the end of the day, all this is supposed to be happening, to be completed by July 1 of 2022. So we're nine months to go approximately until all this is supposed to be done.
So, if the consolidated effort is really just going to control the investment end with it, um, who's going to dictate, is it still going to be I N L that's going to dictate the contribution retirements?
So, they will, they have, they will hire their own independent actuaries, just like the IDUI does right now to calculate the statutory minimum. That's my understanding, that's going to be the same role of that, um, of that actuary is to give you something equivalent to the statutory minimum that you're getting now. And you would still be allowed to have the use of maps on actuaries such as ourselves to calculate a different amount. It's not going to be quite like I R F or the state actuary, this tells you, this is what you have to put in, period, and that's what it is. So they build the investment part of the consolidation around the I R F model, because I R F sort of plan is 100% funded. But for the, um, for the remaining administration of everything, calculation of department statutory minimums, they still, I believe, are going to give some luxury to follow the minimum, or you may be able to contribute a different amount, um, based on a private actuary's report.
As you said, the regulator, what happens if the municipality just doesn't meet their minimum funding obligations? Because it sounds like you've got your minimum obligation, which really doesn't get you there.
Right.
You know, and then you've got, you know, what you guys are telling us to do, which hopefully will get us there. But, I mean, I'm sure, I mean, you've done pretty well, I think, all things considered. I can't imagine every municipality is like contributing at the rate we are. And, I mean, what happens though? I mean, at the end of the day, in 2040 or 21, 21, whatever it is.
Right.
I mean, would they just put their hands and say?
And that's one of the biggest problems of what happens right now, and how a lot of these funds got to the situation you're positioned that you're in. So you're 50% funded, the median as of about a year ago, and the current asset environment is probably up a little bit, was about 55%, the median on the state. So there, you're just like almost everybody else, you're not an outlier by any means. There's some funds out there that are 18s and 20% funded, those are, you know, that's the hard ones of the world. That's the ones that really have had some funding obstacles. And why they got there is because, like you said, there's, there's no alarms, there's no bells or whistles that go off. If you don't put in your contribution, what happens? Really nothing. Until a few years ago, they implemented what they call the state controllers intercept. A pension board, if they're not getting the contributions, at least the statutory minimum, you can go to the state's controller, and you can intercept the, what would, the assets that would normally go to the municipality. You can intercept that and say, fund our pension plan first, you have our statutory minimum, and then any excess would go to, uh.
It's like a seizure action, I mean, it's like a seizure action.
Yeah, and there's, we've worked with a few funds that have done it. We've worked with Harvey Fire that did, or Harvey Police and Fire, and immediately say, okay, we're going to fire 10 officers, we're going to fire 10 firefighters, because we can't afford that. So we're going to spend, you're going to take our money, we're going to cut payroll. So there's always a political component with you, and trying to, uh, you know, uh, kind of good relationship between the pension boards and, uh, the municipalities themselves. And if, if you're going to go down that road, you're going to expect some, um, you know, some resistance to that. And however the game gets played after that, I don't know. There, there is, there is something happening, and you know, and it's, and it's not a cheap thing to do when you're getting attorneys involved, you're getting actuaries, computing extra calculations. So, the additional fees that go on top of that can get pretty expensive as well. So, if you're like, a hundred thousand short, how are you not worthwhile doing it? If you're three million short, might be something to consider. You're, you're a smaller business, where those numbers aren't as large as that, but, um, that is, that's really the only option right now, if you were underfunded, that a pension board themselves would do to try to, uh, force additional funding.
It's barely a motive at all, because it's still causing consequences.
Right, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions on that? Moving to the next page, I already talked about the breakdown of contribution, just being a little bit different to your normal cost here at the door, I'm limited. Um, let's skip to page seven. This is just a look at your market value of assets. Now recall, this is, you know, as of the beginning of the plan, so a real difference here in October. But you started at here 9.5 million, you're up to 11.1 million. Now that, that crossover of that $10 million threshold is important. So, under the, the way that the investment, the board can invest, when you're undertaking $10 million, you can only go up to 45% equity, 55% fixed income. Once you cross that $10 million threshold, you can go up to 65%. So, it's important to note that difference, because I don't know if the pension board has done that, they probably took advantage of that to accelerate, um, their, their investment mix to go more into equities, expecting a greater return. So that's always a good, a really big target to get to, which you have seen in this year. Um, you'll see your employer contributions at 666,000, and member contributions of 104, investment returns of 2.14 million, so that's where I got that 22% return number. And as was a little bit too early, your benefit payments, 967,000, so you're almost paying out a million dollars a year in benefit payments with some expenses tagged down. And part of our risk management things, we like to take a look at is, is those benefit payments, because that's a cash flow thing, right? If you took a ratio of the benefit payments compared to your market value, so if you do either of those two, we get a ratio of about 8.5%. So each year, you're paying out 8.5% of your money out in benefit payments. We're only earning 6.5%. Ideally, we'd like that ratio to be under your investment terms. So, investment terms pay your benefits, so that means all the contributions come in, municipal and employee, go to pay down the unfunded, and go to secure the accrual benefits by their actives. So when that ratio exceeds that 6.5, then you're going to have some cash flow. All the unfunded liability is not paying off as quickly as normal, and you're going to probably have greater contributions down the road to make up that, that difference. I don't think 8.5 compared to 6.5 is a dire situation. I think if you get up to 12, 13, 15%, then you're really seeing, uh, a cash flow dip, because the money's just going in and right back out the door. You're not able to invest it, and those are the funds that usually sub, sub 40% fund in, 35%. And I really have those ratios really high like that. So we're not suggesting you're there, but it is a risk management we like to take a look at, um, to make sure that we are following, uh, making the contributions as, as we would expect. Uh, and if you turn the page over, you look at the benefit payments, what it's going to do within the next five or 10 years. Five years from now, it's going to increase by about 25% up to 1.2 million. 10 years, it's going to increase by 54% up to about 1.5 million. So the increases will include the COLA increases that are already being earned by your retirees, and also taking into account the attribution of members who may become retiring eligible. As you had one large increase this past year, uh, one retired member, so it counts that, you know, his benefits are going to go up. So you may have a few members in that five or 10-year range who are going to retire. You're going to start paying down benefits as well, so that number's going to go up. Now, when we calculate our liabilities and we calculate the contributions, all that's taken into account. We expect all that to happen, so it's not, I'm not trying to sound off alarms here that you're, you're going to have this good contribution battle that's taken into account. Following a recommended 100% funding target, following 90% target, you're going to be a little short on all those items, okay? So that's just something to keep in mind when we're looking at that. So that's just something to keep in mind when we're looking at that. Going forward to the next page, the risk management, page nine. I talked about the second bullet, the first bullet here, market value assets 11.4 million versus the liability for your inactive members. So just the retirees, beneficiaries, disabled members, 17.2 million. So you're unfunded on your inactive membership by approximately 6 million dollars. So these are members who are no longer working, they're back home collecting benefits, that they duly earn, there isn't anything you see. But by being short of contributions of half, you're still paying for them now, okay? If, if we compare your total liability at 20 million, that means you have 3.7 million dollars of active liability compared to 17 million dollars of inactive liability. So that's really shows the heavy weight of where your really liability does sit is with your retired population, not with your active population. And then the last, the last bullet point, if you were to change your expected rate of return, which I don't expect you to do, I'm not suggesting that by any means. But the trend has been coming down, but this is ideally for the funds that are still at 7% or 7.25, bringing down 25 basis points. With about 7% increase, about 8,000 dollars additional contribution requirement on top of that. So that's the inverse relationship with the decreasing investment return, increasing your contribution. But again, we're not suggesting that you're, I think, in a really good spot at 6.5. We'd love to get a lot more of our funds down to 6.5. Next page is the statutory minimum contribution. So this is our calculation of the amount, so this would be different than the report we get from, from the, from the IDUI in the sense that we use slightly different assumptions. And the biggest one typically is expected rate of return, the 6.5, we're both using. So that's the biggest difference you would see. The other difference would be the mortality tables, retirement rates, some of those incidental demographic assumptions that we use would be slightly different from the two. But you'd see last year 726,000 increased by about 64,000, 790 this year or so. I don't recall what your, what your IDUI was last year, but it's in that somewhere 100,000 ballpark. So we're pretty close with, with matching to that number, but that's the number you're contributing different. Knowing that's about 300,000 or 400,000 different than our recommended amounts. Questions on that? Going to the next page. This is a five-year contribution history. So as part of the GAZB 68 report or the financial statement report, so we talked all about the funding report contributions, now we're going to shift to accounting in the financial statements. As part of the GAZB 68 statement, we have to do a projection of assets versus benefit payments in order you can have enough money to pay your benefits in the future. And one way we do that without, in the absence of having a formal funding policy, one way we do that is we calculate how much percent of ABC or actual determinate contribution are you putting in each and every year? As you can see here, we determine an actuary determined contribution in the middle and how much you've been putting in and calculate a percent that you're putting in each year. So right now you're 87% of the actual determination. However, that's 80% of the 90% recommended contribution. So you're really funding towards about 80% of your overall liability. In doing so, if you flip the page, you'll see the default solvency test. The results of the solvency test shows that in about 40 years, the plan will be expected to run out of money. What that means from an accounting perspective is, is as long as you have monies in your trust, we can assume that 6.5% rate of return on that money. Once the plan becomes insolvent, we can't assume a 6.5, we have to revert to a government bond index rate, which is about 2.27% for all future amounts. And then to determine that net discount, we calculate a single funded rate that combines those two discount factors in place. And we come up with a rate of 4.73% and calculate your liability for our financial statement report. As I said before, as that rate goes down, your liability goes up. So right now on your financial statements, you're recognizing about additional 6 million dollars of your net pension liability compared to the actual unfunded amount that we're contributing towards. So that's a big difference of how that's going to project out, especially on the accounting side. And that's, that's what we use for a lot of, from the village's standpoint. Okay, that's something you can have some control over. Additional funding, it's not only going to pay the benefits, but it's also going to release some liability on our balance sheet. And then be someone else, and so you have, you might have debt agencies or you might have rating agencies coming in and evaluating everything. That's something they're going to look at, a big unfunded liability, additional unfunded liability here is something you could be impacted by with regards to those agencies. And that's a conclusion, I'll be open to questions, comments, anything else you want to talk about?
So every time basically somebody retires, it's basically money going out instead of money coming in, which means there's less money in the account to work for us towards the end goal. So, I mean, are retirements a fairly, you know, at a fairly level playing, like, you know, you expect this amount of retirements like every two years or five years, 10 years? Or is there like some big like exodus that, a bubble that you're kind of worried about? Because then, those are funds that either we should be trying to address now.
Right.
You know, maybe a little bit anyway while the sun's kind of shining.
Right.
Or that we're going to have to put a lot more money in the donor.
Right, so when we, when we set our assumptions, we know that tier one numbers can start at 50 and 20. So we don't expect every tier one member to take that, they might want to work till 60. So we say 10% is going to go out at 50, 10% is going to go out at 51, and so forth. We're going to continue that, just try to spread it over that, that period. Tier two members have a slightly different, they can't go with under these benefits until age 55, so they're going to be shifted back a little bit. But you have to look at your demographics. You know, if you hired in, you know, 20 years ago, hired in 10 officers all together and they're all aging together, you might see a mass exodus. We've seen several funds just with all the social items going on in the world today with the defunding police and all those things. Officers want to get out as quick as they can. So certain things like that are impacting officers to leave the job early, which as, as a byproduct, is affecting pension plans. Because they're taking those losses, they're paying more of the benefits today than they would have normally been funding towards their expectation.
Thank you.
Considerably suggests that, you know, when you were talking about higher gains about 20%, that we just kind of reduce those down to about 20% total. You know, we're not smoothing out losses, are we?
Pardon me?
We're not smoothing out losses.
Oh yeah, we smooth out gains and losses. Like I said last year, you had losses that were, if your actuarial value assets was higher than the market value, it means you had deferred losses. And that's really what it's, the smoothing technique is really in place to help you in the case of losses. But from an actuarial perspective, we have to use the same gain or loss, it really doesn't matter. We have to implement a policy that gain or loss, we're going to treat the same way. But it's really to help, especially in 2018 when our, for plans at 430 to 20, when rate of COVID hit and everything was down 20%. That's why you're seeing this big returns, because you're recovering from a big drop you saw a year ago. You know, May 1st plans, July 31st plans, they're not seeing 30-plus percent returns, they're seeing 12, 15. Still good years, but they didn't experience that, or they were able to recover partially last year for that real big drop that we saw. And so that's really what the smoothing is, really try to protect losses versus diminished gains. And then when you do have gains, it's going to offset future losses. Or you do have the options, what we, what we call fresh start. Let's fresh start the calculations, let's take all those gains into effect today. You can make your funding percentage go from 55, 50 to 55%. It's going to lower your contribution and we're going to start fresh. But we can't do that again for another five years. So then that means if you did have a bad year, one year or two years from now, it's going to be amplified because you don't have those gains offsetting it. So it's a, you know, good in one way, it could work to the other, depends on the rest of the year that they're pressing on.
So our contribution was about 660, and it really needs to be 841, huh?
Correct. Well, and that's one, that's one I was looking on, just to note with regards to the contribution and the inherent lag. And when the, when you actually request the amount, so you're going to, you're going to have the fund requested in December, you're going to levy it in '22, you're starting to get collected it in '23. So although our contribution is determined in 2021, you're actually not going to collect upon that in 20, till two years later. So in that five-year history that I showed you before, we take that, that two-year difference into account and try to line all those up to make that status appearance.
All right, well.
So then jump to this current year, if you go back to page four of my, I'm reading.
Our, our, it's a kind of cutoff at the writing side, so you can.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's not that current rate home, you know. So for the current budget year that you're in, our levy request was 992,000 dollars based on Alaney's actuarial evaluation. And your budget is 726,000. So.
So you had your request being this for 700?
So for this current year, our request was 982,689 dollars. And from what I can see in the budget, it's, we're on target because we received approximately half of the contributions from the village, is 726,000 dollars. In 2023, we're looking at, enjoy if these numbers correct, 1.1 million? Almost 1.2 million?
Right.
Or 1.120. And the statutory minimum is 790,000. And I think that's what, what we wanted to get here tonight before your budget and your tax levy. And not that we're requesting that you increase property taxes, because that's not it at all. We just want to bring to your attention and so that you can weigh this in when you're working on your budget. The statutory minimum for this, your next budget year will be 790,000 dollars.
Good.
Very better news. Good, that's the return.
Yes. So again, thank you very much for having us tonight. Thank you again to Alan and Alaney for giving the presentation. Tomorrow, the pension board is having a special meeting. And what they will be doing is the final draft of the full actuarial report. They'll be voting to accept that report. And at that point, then we will, once they get sent to it, they'll send the copy over to the village. And they'll also be directing the village attorney to send a letter to the village, which they do every year, so it's nothing new, with our contribution request. So that 1.1 million dollars, we'll be putting that in writing to the village. So I know that it's, in the past, it's wanted, Jennifer, I don't know, they'll send it over to somebody. So maybe look out for it, so. I think that was all that's on our agenda for tomorrow. There's also a compliance report that we send to the village every year that's put together by a lot of back in the.
Yeah, so the county report would be the, the formal request.
Okay, okay, so that's perfect.
So they're, you're going to have to provide a letter.
Pissed on that, yes.
So when is that meeting run?
It's at 3 o'clock here, here on. So we would love to see all of it, but. It'll be quite meeting, quite short meeting.
So any other question?
Brad, is that, you know, this, I'll be back in a bit, if you could get back to us or PM if you know for sure. So there, there is a separate line item for the police pension fund in our, in our property taxes. Is this, is this amount of the 992K roughly, is that fully funded from property taxes? Or is part of it coming from village funds as well, general fund, or whatever, however it's put into?
So around 600 is from property taxes and the rest is the village.
Okay, so two-thirds, maybe less than 6%.
Okay, thanks. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Can I just make one, just kind of general comment? So, you know, the kind of little thumb is, as soon as you put money in, the longer that's. And I don't want to put the children's actuaries over there too many years, whatever it is. But, you know, at times we have like a budget surplus. Why would we be, okay, it's all just numbers on paper, but we have a budget surplus. So something, it's still a problem. Well, I know we should put some of that in general, but why, why wouldn't we just try to put a little bit into the pension fund? So like last year, the year that ended up 430 to 21, you know, we were short 176,000, 177,000 dollars. But yet, my recollection is that we were showing a budget surplus of 1.39. Why the hell wouldn't we have funded up to 100% at least, or even 110% now? So taking some of the pressure off this town.
10 years?
10 years from now. I mean, I think that's, that's a conversation that needs to be had as far as like the policy. And again, I know, you know, we always need money for everyday roads and for, it's, it's all legitimate. But, you know, we can spend a dollar now or spend $5 to stop the road. I'd rather spend a buck now.
Keep that in mind. It's not going to go away, it's going to be an animal, you know, that will force.
But we're 266 short this year and change. It's like, you know, if we, if we come in with a budget surplus, why wouldn't we try to hit that?
So keep this in mind too, in our upcoming budget, you know, meetings that we'll have starting in February, what's needed, where we are, and, and, you know, how we can trim this deficit a bit. So, yeah. It's going to be different. So, okay, well, we're going to move on here then.
Thank you.
Thank you, we need to.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
Okay, public comment on an added item? Does anybody like to just board on an added item? Let's see, none, okay. That's going to conclude our meeting, the whole meeting, we're going to move into an executive session. And I could have a.
Sure, on the option to move to executive session, plus our public meeting, provisions of Illinois Open Meetings Act, Part ILCS 122, Item C1, personnel, and Item C3 appointments.
I'll start with that.
And we will be journeying directly from executive session, not coming back at all.
It's still second day.
Okay.
We're going to.
Trusty Mommy?
Yes.
Trusty Andreessen?
Yes.
Trusty Breton?
Yes.
Trusty Saviata?
Yes.
Trusty Chiver?
Yeah.
Nancy Rose N. White?